Just a quick introduction. This resolution was adopted by city council on June 14th of this year directing the planning board to recommend zoning districts where cannabis should be permitted and land use regulations requirements of cannabis businesses. We've been workshopping with the administration and evaluating how and where appropriate regulations will be advising these new legalized uses in the city. So very brief background, there are six legal classes of cannabis. Class one is cultivation, which consists of growing producing cannabis. Class two is manufacturing, which is preparing and packaging cannabis. Class three is wholesale, which stores cannabis in bulk. Class four is distribution, which transports cannabis products in bulk from one licensed cannabis facility to another. Class five is retail, which is the sale of cannabis to consumer consumers for purchase. And class six is the delivery of cannabis, transporting it or delivering it from one licensed retailer to consumers. And we are proposing that all six classes will be permitted in the city within certain zoning districts and I will get to that right now. So classes one, two, three, and four will be permitted in the light industrial district. Class five will be permitted in the central business district, the North Avenue historic district, and TODD South redevelopment area specifically the Cleveland Avenue Arts and Culture District and the central business district. One thing to note regarding the North Avenue Historic District, it's come to our attention that a portion of this district is within the North Avenue redevelopment plan. So this would also have to be required to be amended. I'm going to move on to, oh, I'll show this using the zoning map of the city as a base map. On the top, the first image on the top shows the white industrial district at the west end of the city will be permitted. And the bottom image shows two other white industrial districts, one being along South Avenue further east and also a white industrial district between Beckerman Street and Richmond Street.
The top, what street is that?
It's along a couple, I think it's South Second and West Front Street. And class five will be permitted, as I mentioned, North Avenue Historic District and will also be the North Avenue redevelopment area, TODD South, the Cleveland Avenue District, and the central business district, and the city's central business district as a whole. Moving on to performance standards and conditions that are being proposed, I'm going to outline major items, but I'm going to go through a few specific regulations of the district. I'm not going to capture everything, but I'm just going to try to go through highlights of it. So there will be, well, first of all, licenses will be issued by the state, the state's regulatory cannabis commission, and these facilities that obtain these licenses must comply with state regulations. There will be a maximum of four businesses with a class one, two, three, and four license. Note, this isn't for each class, this is a total for each of the four classes. So within classes one through four, there can only be four businesses total. For class five, which again is retail, there will be three businesses permitted as a maximum. Distance requirements, a cannabis business cannot be located within 500 feet of any school, licensed daycare facility, park, or playground, cannot locate within 250 feet of any other retail cannabis business, and also cannot locate within 100 feet of any residential zoning district.
Any chance that we could change those distances?
What would you want to say?
Well, I remember when I was working for that top one with respect to the drug laws that they had, it was a 1,000-foot radius of any school, public, private charter school, licensed daycare center, or playground. And why not say the same unless they have reduced that?
Well, not on a federal level, but most of the lowest, the ordinances that were reviewed in the state of New Jersey are suggesting 500 feet, and I would recommend that we keep the 500.
That's just slightly more than the football field.
We've reviewed, if I may, we've reviewed ordinances that are being proposed in other municipalities as well, and 500 feet is fairly standard. And I understand that that was the restriction for, I guess, drug-free?
Yes.
But this is, this is, this cannabis is going to be legalized, so it's legal. So it's a little bit, little bit different. I'm going to go through all the other ones.
Why so close for our retail businesses?
I didn't, could you repeat that?
250 feet for other retail cannabis business?
That's to keep them apart from each other.
I would suggest going further.
I would not recommend that.
Let me run.
Is that what other, is that what other ordinances have 250 feet?
Yeah, that's also fairly standard as well, yes.
Are they urban or suburban municipalities?
Urban, urban.
Are there any suburban municipalities?
That I, that I have reviewed or seen, not, not that would be, that can compare to Plainfield.
My question was, are there suburban municipalities that are entertaining and passing this type of ordinance?
I'm, I'm not certain for sure what their, what their restrictions are. There are, I mean, municipalities are opting in and out, and if they're opting in, they're coming up with their regulations, but I am not certain for sure what suburban towns are doing.
Continue.
Okay, thank you. Site plan will be required by, approved by the planning board, and TRC, a technical review committee, meeting with a representative from health and social services of the city will also be required. The, we've come up with parking requirements, loading, and signage that are proposed within. And we've also added controls for operating conditions. There will be one licensed security guard at least at every retail facility. Hours of operation will be 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. A maximum capacity of 30 patrons per 500 square feet of ghost door area would be the maximum permitted at any time, and that licensed security guard would, would regulate that or be monitoring that.
May I ask questions on this page too?
Wait, wait until, I'm going to go through a few other things, if you can hold to the end, please.
Okay, then we'll be coming back, thank you.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Public consumption will not be permitted on site and public consumption, consumption won't be permitted on site, nor will public consumption be permitted.
Ask your question. Ask your question, Siddiq.
All right.
Oh, he said wait till he finishes, so.
No, ask your question on this page.
Okay, with respect to security, what type of security, we talking about, security agency, armed security, non-armed security?
That, that is not covered in the, in the, I think part of that is covered in the state law, which you can read. What we're requiring is.
I had all this stuff in front of me because we're just getting this thrown out tonight.
It was sent to you, I thought.
Yeah, I got it, I got a billion questions on it.
But most of us, what, what I'm trying to say to you, we're not rewriting what the city is requesting. So as far as the type of security, it would be security that has to be approved on your state level for your license. You're not licensed properly, if you're not provide, if you're not doing what the license requires, which is a state-required license, then you will not operate.
And some of it, just so you guys know, the cannabis commission is going to issue regulations on the licenses, but they haven't done that yet. So the, the, some of the parameters for how these licenses are going to be treated are going to be regulated by, by the state agency. So just so you guys understand, some of this is going to be the city's jurisdiction, but other aspects of it are going to be just handled on a statewide basis by the commission.
Okay, because in reading this ordinance, I see that there's a lot of responsibility that the security individual has to do that looks like it's part of the operation of the business as opposed to just the security of the business, such as screening all the individuals that come in, keeping account, a head count of no more than 30 people inside. I mean, and this is one individual?
It doesn't, that's not necessarily one person. That's just talking about being able to provide security.
And, and that is a minimum of one person as well, so they.
It doesn't say that?
No, it does, it says at least one security guard will be on the premises.
And remember, there's a site plan, they have to come before the board for a site plan, in which you can then say that 15 hundred square feet is not enough, it's too large, or whatever, so you're not losing control. And what I should have done at the beginning of this is that all of you, I think we all are aware, that the city has done two surveys and at least two online presentations to the general public. And then had, had both occasions votes from the residents. The residents all voted positive to have cannabis with the five areas or six areas that we discussed here in Plainfield. So let's continue to the next page.
So we also have regulations regulating odor, noise, and again, I said signage, the words, we've eliminated certain words to be permitted on signs, which include weed, pot, cannabis, and marijuana. And a couple of excerpts from the master plan, which demonstrates the permitting cannabis as consistent with the master plan. The land use element recommends to consider the following permitted, permitted or conditional uses in appropriate zones throughout the city, and number six was marijuana and dispensary sales. And the economic plan element recommends light industrial manufacturing in the west end of the city. The city should foster growth and expansion of the industrial manufacturing industries. This is an existing hub of manufacturing and industrial businesses in Plainfield. Since these industries are significant drivers of the economy, the city should work towards creating jobs. So this is especially prevalent in the inclusion of classes one through four in the city's light industrial zoning district. And that, that concludes my presentation of the proposed cannabis ordinance.
Any additional questions from the board?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead.
Back in the, in the ordinance, number five, with respect to signage.
Are you looking at exhibit A?
No, I'm looking at what was sent to me in the package, the ordinance itself.
There is no number five.
Well, in the ordinance that was sent in our package, Roman number five, signage, a display of products.
That's an exhibit, let me see where you're at.
It came in the package.
He's talking about the ordinance.
In your, in your ordinance was two parts, the ordinance plus an exhibit A.
On page three of the ordinance, there is a Roman number four and five. Five is signage and display of products.
All right, go ahead and answer your question.
I see it says that the words cannabis marijuana pot and weed cannot be exhibited, but it doesn't refer to anything where it could be exhibited as a logo. Is there anything that's going to be stated about that?
The ordinance, the state law says you cannot identify, anything cannot identify it as a retail marijuana store. So that means you can't put the leaves up.
I wish that.
You can't put a guy up smoking, you can't do any of that. That has been taken care of, and that's why we said the signage cannot indicate anything that deals with drug, marijuana itself.
Okay, I wish I'd had that included. Parking, down at Roman number seven, talks about off-site arrangements, especially dealing with the retail establishments, and it says that, you know, it can be satisfied through off-site parking arrangement, lease parking spaces from Plainfield municipal, municipal lots. And my question is, for a lot of the projects that we have approved, developers have been given the opportunity to buy X number of spaces or rent X number of spaces from municipal lots. And my question is now, we're introducing a whole nother industry that is also saying, hey, look, if you don't have speed parking, you can obtain parking spaces from our parking lots. And my question is, what does our inventory look like? How many spaces are available in each of these lots? Because some of these places have multiple projects that are buying spaces in those parking lots.
I don't have an answer for inventory, but I do have an answer from a planning board standpoint, if you do a site plan, and that particular site requires X number of spaces, and those spaces aren't available, what happens to that application?
We change, we change the requirements and tell them they're in a TOD, welding, and they only need point eight.
That only applies to apartments councilman. However, however, that's, that's what would happen, Siddiq. I do not know the inventory, and if the inventory is not there.
Then they can't get the parking spaces, and therefore they can't get the application.
May not happen.
Okay. It mentioned also that there would be annual inspections by the quality of life task force. Can he elaborate on this? Is there going to be specialized training for them? What are they going to be looking for, you know?
They're an existing committee with the city, so they're, I mean, they, they're already looking at those kind of issues, reviewing, I believe they review any, any business establishment they, they'll, they review.
Well, now we're.
The quality of life group, if I'm not mistaken, is made up of police, inspections, fire.
Health, public works.
Right.
Community development, zoning, and bulk division of PMUA.
Yeah, so that group, now, if you're talking about special training, I would imagine they're going to get the same training that the police force is going to get.
Okay, here's where I'm, what I'm looking at, what I'm trying to get at is, okay, so there are, there is a specific individual that's in this quality of life task force from each of these agencies representing that agency. Are there going to be substitutions of that individual if that individual is trained on what to look for in this, and he's on, or she is on vacation, and another one stops?
I'm going to stop you, Siddiq. What you need to do, what I would suggest, anyone that has that concern that this group that the city has had for several years, I believe, is not qualified to.
I didn't say that, I did not say that.
Your question is asking, well, if somebody goes on vacation, those are operational questions. So only thing I can do is have you ask, what, what do they do now when they have to go to an abatement site, and somebody's on vacation? Would you think they would have another person? Let's just think logically.
Oh, it's not.
It's not going to be, it's not going to, you're not going to have, this committee has been around for a long, this group has been around for a long time. I've seen them operating. They, it is, when you see them go to a particular site, now, I'm not sure if I've seen the same people each time. It is, those groups will provide the individuals in an appropriate manner in order to do their jobs. So it's not, please don't think of it as, okay, if Bob Smith is not here, nobody's going to replace Bob Smith. It's an entire organization.
The new industry that we're dealing with.
I have a question. Siddiq, are you suggesting maybe that there need to be a review by someone in addition to the quality review? Because it does state that at a minimum, they're not limited to, but they want at least one annual health and safety review, an inspection.
I'm just saying, it's a new industry that heretofore has never existed. So is that, is there going to be a requirement of some additional training in this particular industry?
Well, I think I agree with the chairman on that, that's kind of a procedural matter in terms of the composition of the quality of life task force. And if they had to step up qualifications in order to accommodate this particular ordinance, I think that's something that I would hope has been or will be addressed. I don't think that we have any leverage there.
I got to ask the questions.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just thought.
No, that, that was a great answer, better than mine. Continue, you have another question, anyone else, or Siddiq, you still have questions?
I'm good, oh, yeah, I got a lot. I went through this with a fine tooth comb. It talks about delivery of this, this product. And I thought about, you know, watching all various TV shows and stick-ups, et cetera and so forth. Now we're transporting cannabis, is there anything that addresses how it will be, and what it will be transported in?
Yes, and the answer to your question is there's a non-marked vehicles, so you will not have a sign, Siddiq's Marijuana Transfer Company, it will just be a truck. And they will have, they have regulations too. Some of the questions you're, some of the questions you're asking requires probably reading the state law as how it indicates. That's why the signage, that's why you have five different areas, and each of which all have certain state requirements. So you won't, you should not know unless that's part of your industry, or if like maybe some of those guys on NCIS or the rest of those TV shows figure out that this truck is delivering marijuana. However, it is, that's the way it is set up, so that you're not even going to identify the vehicle that is making this store delivery or making the wholesale delivery, these, they will not be identifiable.
Good enough, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Billy.
One of them is the bulk restrictions, are there any, you know, for the warehousing and the distribution and the retail sites, are there limits on how much product they can keep?
I'm not sure in terms of, of storage, but the underlying bulk requirements for all the zoning districts that were committed in.
Well, I think he's not talking about bulk requirements in buildings, I think he's talking about how much product can you have, tons, three tons, is that what you're asking, Billy?
Yeah, yeah, how many kilos you can like store at a particular site.
I, we saw that, but I do not remember what that requirement was. I think there, there is a limit in terms of warehousing, but I don't remember what that was. But that's, again, a state requirement.
Okay, good, so there are limits and the state establishes those. And then I just had a question about the public consumption issue. It's unlike alcohol, I mean, alcohol you can't consume publicly, but they do consume it in restaurants and in bars and places. But apparently the flower in the edibles, there'll be no consumption or sampling at the retail level or any place in the city to, you know.
The city ordinance does not prohibit consumption outside of the establishment, inside of the establishment. We haven't set up any pot houses, so the intent of the law, both locally and statewide, is that you take your goodies home to your house.
But you can't sample it at the store to see.
As far as I know, I don't see any, I have not seen any laws statewide or even locally that allow you to taste a cookie.
Okay, that's, that's, my questions are answered, thank you.
I, somewhat in answer to Siddiq's question as far as the safety of this product coming in and out, I would think it would be maybe a little less security, as though a Brink's truck, when a Brink's truck comes through, you know there's money on that truck. And so if you're going to rob it, you're going to rob it. So I don't think, I would think it'd be almost as similar, but not quite as much security when you have a Brink's truck. And as far as how much product can be in a building is like, how much money can a bank hold before the Brink's truck come and comes and takes it away? So, I mean, that's not really my concern.
Yeah, this is, this is a really, since the federal laws are different than your state laws, it's going to be very interesting throughout any state. Everybody knows about Colorado, some people know about California, I read a lot about Massachusetts, and, and none of those issues were, occurred in Massachusetts. I'm not, I don't know much about Colorado, I was told and what I read, you know, had ups and downs. But many of these things just didn't occur, and what we have to look at, one of the things I think we should be aware of, this is a multi-billion dollar industry, the city will do, will receive a great deal of money from any one of these entities in terms of being here. But, you know, there's going to be some other things, you know, federally, you know, federal banks can't touch it. So I would imagine credit unions and state banks are the ones that are going to be touching those, those folks' money. So, you know, it, it will be, it will be interesting to see, you know, how it proceeds. But one thing we must know is that since, since the city has said they want this, and we have a deadline of August something, I forget what it is, it's early in August, if you do nothing, you got it anyway. So then you still have to make up your rules. Since we're making up our rules because the city has decided it wanted it, when I say city surveys and all of those things came about, so I think there was a lot of thought put into this, and, you know, you know, I think it's something good. Any other questions? Okay, let's go to the audience, anyone in the audience have any questions? I don't see any hand raises or any of those other items. Peter, you don't have anyone calling you?
Nope, don't see any.
Okay, any additional questions from the board? Hearing none? I'd like a motion to approve the council's request for this ordinance.
So moved.
One second, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, this is, it's a multifaceted motion in this situation because if you follow what Mr. Martini was proposing, they proposed an ordinance, that ordinance proposes a change in the, in certain zones to permit the retail sales as well as manufacture or wholesale distribution. Two of the locations where retail sales are going to be permitted are also, sorry, redevelopment plan, redevelopment zone, so areas, that's where. So we need to also amend the redevelopment plans for the TODD South redevelopment area and the North Avenue redevelopment plan. So the motion will be to endorse the ordinance and amend those two plans to permit retail sales.
I, yes, I agree.
So if I can just spell out what, what it is we're trying to do, so we're all on the same page.
Having heard that, Parma Cida?
So moved.
Who's second? It's been moving second, can I have a roll call, please?
Almen?
Yes.
Jackie Workman?
Yes.
Boris Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles McCray?
Yes.
Barry Patterson?
Yes.
Carmen Cede Pao?
Yes.
William Toth?
Yes.
Amal Blanco?
Yes.
Ron Scott Beck?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that, uh, passes. Now we have, uh, several resolutions.